I now call to order the August eighth, twenty twenty-three, regular meeting Board of Trustees. Time being six thirty. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
May I get a roll call, please? Trustee Daly.
Present.
Trustee Gator.
Here.
Trustee Mason.
Here.
Trustee Wigan.
Here.
Trustee Teets.
Here.
Mayor President McDonald.
Here.
Mayor Shosse.
Here.
Thank you. We have a quorum. Any amendments to the CB's agenda? Any conflicts of interest in this evening's agenda? Perfect. All right, so now we'll be moving on to, uh, public comment. Um, individuals wishing to speak on non-agenda items are asked to approach the podium, uh, sign up and state your name for the record, please. Um, each speaker will be limited to three minutes. Uh, anybody desiring to make a statement on the planning commission decision on June fifth, twenty twenty-three, please cite or cite plan approval, uh, this board cannot consider your comments at this time. There's an appeal hearing scheduled, uh, for the twenty-third of August that will require the Board of Trustees to act in a quasi judicial role, um, as it is considered, um, for the planning commission's decision from June fifth, uh, to ensure that all parties' due process rights are protected. We will not permit any public comment related, uh, to that meeting or the decision at this time. There's an established process and we need to abide by the law when the time comes to consider the appeal. We cannot take comments on that topic into account, so please help us get through this evening, uh, without any issues. Hello, comment? Going once, going twice. So, perfect. Next item, uh, is going to be a presentation, uh, on the town's community survey results presented by Ms. Cody Hodling, the Town Deputy Administrator.
All right. Good evening, Mayor and Board of Trustees. Before you tonight is an update on the community survey results. Um, so tonight I'll be reviewing, um, the background of this survey. I'll review the Community Livability Report, the key findings, um, the custom questions that the board selected, and then I'll open it up to any questions. And just as a, a high level, there's, there's a lot to this survey. And I, I don't want to diminish any one particular item because it's all incredibly important. So I'm going to try to keep it as high level as possible. Um, because it's, it probably deserves much debate over, um, the board's budgeting process and strategic planning. So what I would recommend is that this is a document the board carries with you as you look at our strategic plan and through the budgeting process. And it's something that staff will be incorporating to the budget of like mentioning these things. So just wanted to mention that before we get going. Um, all right. So, uh, the role of community surveys in general, um, they're great benchmarking tools. And so, um, as we're looking at this tonight, you might see national benchmarks. And I think what we want to keep in mind is that we, if the board continues to do this survey, maybe every two or every three or four years, let's benchmark against ourselves. So this is, this is year one and we have lots of room to grow. And so this will help inform us, make decisions about the strategic plan, um, in the budget. And so, um, so you might see those national measures, but we're going to start, this is our first start for it. Um, so there is ten elements to the Community Livability Report, and that ranges from safety to education, arts and culture. And so it really, the goal of this is tried to capture, um, a holistic view of our community, even if there's some things that we don't quite provide yet. And we remember we had that debate when we're entering into the conversations of should we mention transportation while we don't offer it? Well, let's, let's start somewhere because there might be a time in twenty years that we might have a bus system or hopefully sooner than that. So, um, we want to get started some. So for Wellington's results, um, as you'll recall, we did the survey and that ranged, um, the opening date, uh, for those mailed surveys was April to May. And we did a sample size of two thousand eight hundred randomly selected households. And we got a response of about eighteen response, uh, eighteen percent response rate, and that was, uh, five hundred and two total surveys received, which was great. And then we did that open participation survey that was open to anyone in the community and we had about a hundred and fourteen responses for that. And that's pretty typical for other, um, entities that do this survey as well. So our benchmarking, as I again said, that we're benchmarking against ourselves and that's important to keep in mind as we review the results. So the overall Community Livability Report, so there is two sections to this high level report. The first one looks at quality, so the perceived quality and these two reports, it kind of takes all those sub-questions and it's giving you the high level look at like, um, economic health, transportation. So this is the complete summary for each one of those breakout categories. And then the next slide I'll show is the level of importance for each one of those, um, categories. And so as you're kind of looking at this first page, um, some key things to keep in mind. So areas that we were the lowest ranked in category, so areas for improvement, um, education, arts and culture, quality of utility, infrastructure and transportation system. And then some of the higher ranked areas was feeling of safety, park and recreation opportunities and natural environment. And I'll get into these a little bit more. And then you go over to the page of the level of importance and you can see a lot of these are very important to our residents as they should be. So, um, you can kind of skim throughout that and see, um, again, some of those top areas. So I, I think this is one of the, the key slides to look at if you're looking for the Cliff Notes version of the community survey. Um, so if you take a look at that X-axis, that is what is important to our residents, um, which is the horizontal line, um, taking a look at the Y-axis, the vertical line, that shows, um, the quality, uh, perceived quality. And so I think the, the best area is to, to focus on that bottom right quadrant. And so for our residents, that's what's most important to them, but has the lowest quality. And so I think that's a great way to start to frame this conversation is that, let's take a look at utilities, for example. We know that is incredibly important to our residents and we're doing something about it. Under way, we have over eighty million dollars of infrastructure for our water and our wastewater treatment plant. And that is something that this board should be proud of because you're doing something about the infrastructure. So that one, we're working towards that, but it's not, the results aren't seen by residents yet. So that's going to be a lagging thing that as we, you know, potentially do that next survey that we'll be able to say, wow, that's, that's gone up. And hopefully that's in that, the top right quadrant. Um, economy, that one is tricky as we don't, we have some influence, but we don't, that's also a national issue, it's a state issue. And so kind of looking at some of those breakout things, of course, the economy is very important. And so we do need to think about through the lens of what are the things that we can influence, you know, through, um, the avenues that we have available to us. So take a look at that, uh, and then again, just know that there's some of those things with a strategic plan in front of you as we're having the conversations that we are working towards a lot of these things. So next I'm going to break it down into where the report said that our three key findings are. Of course, you might have your own key findings from the report, but this is how they structured the conversation. So, um, key finding number one, Wellington residents generally feel safe and experience a high quality of life. So getting into that, one of those first areas of the feeling of safety, um, I, I think it's a great thing. Nine in ten of our residents reported feeling, um, very or somewhat safe in their neighborhood during the day and during down, in the downtown area. Um, that's a, that's a great indicator to see. Many safety-related services receive positive marks like our, um, Sheriff's Office. I think that's great to see in there. Um, and additionally, eighty-four percent of our residents stated that safety is an important issue for Wellington community to focus on the next two years, um, and will continue to focus on those things too. So I think that was, that was one of our, that top right quadrant of things that are important and that they perceive that we're doing well. All right, quality of life, another, another good indicator here. About eight in ten of our residents were pleased with their neighborhood as a place to live. Um, seventy-two percent ranked Wellington as an excellent or a good place to live. Sixty-two percent ranked Wellington as an excellent or good quality of life. Um, so that's, that's good to know, even though some of the indicators are a little bit lower, they still felt like it was a good quality of life. And you'll see later in, in the survey that it was a good place to raise a family as well. So the next key finding, the economy, uh, uh, the economy and general affordability are priorities for residents. So let's get into that one. So the economy, again, um, the overall economic health of Wellington was identified by residents as the second most important issue for our town. Um, about half of our residents, um, you know, rated the local economy as fair and only twenty-five percent rated it as good or excellent. So we do have, uh, you know, a ways to go in there and then kind of looking at some of those breakout indicators. Um, you know, some concern about lack of shopping opportunities, employment opportunities, a variety of businesses. And so I think that's something to keep in mind that, um, we are part of what makes a solid community is the businesses, unique businesses that support it. And so looking for avenues, um, in ways to support our business owners, I think will be key as we enter, um, with the expansion of those water and wastewater treatment plants. And we will need to be growing and have more opportunities for commercial development. So something to keep in mind. All right, key finding number three, residents value Wellington's natural environment and park system, but support additional investment in recreational opportunities. So on this one, they, I don't have every single breakout in here, but they also combined some of those custom questions, uh, to which, to make this key finding. Um, so nearly sixty percent of our residents were pleased with the town's parks and overall quality and recreational opportunities. Um, but people also stated that, um, you know, they'd be willing to fund additional measures to support that. Um, around four in ten residents positively evaluated the preservation of natural areas and open spaces and the ability of parks and walking trails. So that's another area of potential investment that, uh, people feel could be needed. And then this one is pretty interesting too, is, um, less than forty percent of residents, uh, believe that there was opportunities for recreation services, um, for like facilities-based and recreation programmings. And as we know, we don't have a facility, um, the Leaper Center is our one sole facility, but we do partner with other entities. All right, custom questions. So these, um, we did some questions that the board wanted to identify within the survey. Um, so this first one asked residents how they receive town news. And so looking at this, I only, uh, listed the major sources of news. You can see the whole breakout in there. But our major sources of news are, um, the town's Facebook page, the website and the Board of Trustees meeting. Um, when I first started with the town, we did not livestream these meetings. So, um, a- as talking with our communications manager, I think we, we want to be really thoughtful about our staffing levels because we have a team of one. And I think we've come a really, really long way in the almost five years that I've been here. And a lot of our town staff members are a team of one, so like utility billing department, team of one. Um, and so again, I think we, I think it's, um, it's encouraging to know that we have a, a long way to go and that we're going to get there, um, but, but do know that some of us, it's just us. So we're trying to change some of the narrative that we talk about. Um, all right, custom question two. This asked residents their level of support for additional investment. So would they be willing to support these things? And there's a scale of that. So those top areas that are under the strongly support category, um, that are over kind of that fifty-five percent mark, uh, residents say they would strongly support additional investment for a community recreation center and public pool. And then you can see kind of the other indicators in there as well. All right, custom question three. This asked residents, um, their level of interest in participating in different types of activities that might not be, um, common or could be a new opportunity. Um, and so those top areas for this one, um, activities for the whole family, which makes sense because we're a very family-based community. Um, outdoor concerts and nature-based programming were some of those top areas within that, but you can see the other ones. Um, custom question four is open-ended. Um, and so I am not going to summarize all of those, but we did want to, uh, be really, um, thoughtful to residents of was there anything that they felt we missed in the survey? And so whether any additional questions or concerns, um, and, and so I did a word cloud because there, I didn't know what to do, to be honest. Uh, but please do take a look at those breakout of the, of the open, they're, they're very insightful. And so they might give some additional, um, lens into how what residents are feeling. Um, the largest word we see in there is, um, like water and community. And, and do know again, that that's something that the board, you are all focusing on right now. At this point, I, I could keep going. Um, I do have more slides, but I, I would pause and kind of see what the wishes are of the board are. What would you like me to do next? Or do you have any questions?
Questions? Want to go around? Trustee Gator?
So I don't, I mean, I think there's a lot here to digest and it's really good information, a good summary. Um, I don't know if at some point it'd make sense to do a work session or something where we can actually, once we've all had a chance to kind of digest everything, to sit down with staff and actually discuss, okay, how do we incorporate this into budgeting and strategic plan and stuff like that? I don't, I don't think tonight would be the time to do it because we all just got this. But, you know, if you guys were open to that, I was thinking that might be helpful to bring back in a work session. So we can actually all have a chance to sit through it and then we can discuss like, okay, we have all this information. What do we do with it now?
Yeah, I mean, I, yeah, I think that's, I think that's great. Yes, concur. Yeah, in the future.
Yep. I absolutely agree with that because there's so, so much value and content here. Um, the other thing I think is really important, for one thing, I'm, I'm really happy with the outcome of how many people participated. Um, that was above my expectations and I, I think, um, higher than we would have hoped. So I think that's fantastic. So everybody who participated, thank you, if you're listening. Um, and it is so valuable. So in addition to doing that, where we really dive deep into it, um, one of the documents that I hold close to my heart and utilize every single time I'm making a decision is comprehensive plan. Because that is, you know, the vision and future of Wellington and how the, the community have enacted and put that together, um, within a plan. So in addition to that, this will be my second-hand tool where if and when every decision, not just once when we're diving deep into it, but when, upon making any decision or discussion, in addition to hearing from the community, we should always reference this as well. Um, because this is, you know, a documented method in order to receive very good feedback, um, in, in a, you know, in a way that is, um, important and valid. So, uh, I think that's the other thing is that we recall and reference this as frequently as possible, regardless of what the question or decision is. So that's my other feedback, but, uh, there is so much and I, I, uh, have felt a little, um, I feel good because a lot of things that I personally thought on behalf of the community or that I've heard are very well represented in the results of this as well. So, um, it's making me feel like I'm moving in the right direction and I'm happy, but now we have more information so we can do more. So thank you. Thank you so much.
Trustee Teets?
I, I think this is awesome. Um, a lot of the results, I think that, because I did have a chance to review it all, did expect a lot of the outcomes that we had saw. Um, I am, do want to grad, congratulate our LCSO officers. That was something that was very blatantly clear that we do have people that feel safe in our community, which is awesome because I did go and look at some other surveys and it's not ranging as high on that score list. Um, the other thing to point out is I would love to see what we can do about having some of these printouts available at our like community gathering events where if someone wants to take one, fill it out, turn it into the town and we can just progressively keep track of it because while five hundred and two surveys is great, we are a population of almost fourteen thousand people. So, and I don't feel that five hundred and two probably represents fourteen thousand people. It's a good starting point to work off of, but how to gather more of the community feedback for people who don't have access to Facebook, who don't have access to complete these forms or don't even know about these forms in general. So just different ways to engage, to have them completed would be awesome to have in a future conversation when we come back for that work session. Other than that, I think it's great. I know it was a lot of work, so I'm very grateful.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah. Well, and it was, it was like mailed at random.
Mailed randomly.
Through the mail, right?
Yes.
But yeah, no, definitely. I mean, yeah, for sure. Trustee.
Trustee Wigan?
Yeah, I think we, uh, see through this survey that, uh, we have typical small-town problems. And, uh, you know, it was cool seeing how the, uh, law enforcement was, uh, respected in this. And, you know, overall, our community, I think is pretty happy with the town. You know, again, we have our problems, we have our water. Uh, I've lived in small communities all my life pretty much, and, uh, this is pretty typical. And, uh, where you have a lot of the other things like community centers and stuff like that, it does have to get paid for. So when the community is ready to increase taxes or whatever else, then possibly we can look at that. But right now I think we got, you know, water and sewer really to focus on and get us through that, especially with the major inflation problem that we have right now. You know, a lot of people are living, you know, paycheck to paycheck, uh, social security payment to payment. So, you know, we always have to be conscious of that. But, uh, yeah, I thought it was very interesting. Uh, one thing, there was a comment in there about, uh, our overpass. I keep hitting on that.
Mm-hmm.
And I thought that was really good that he said, you know, we, we need to start focusing on what we can do, how we can get brought up to the top tier of possibly getting this thing worked at. Maybe, you know, we need to be focused on maybe contacting Mike Lynch or whoever else is our representatives and really start putting some pressure on them so we can get that improved. But, uh, you know, we got, we got some work to do, but I think this is great. It's a great blueprint for the future. So thank you.
Fantastic presentation. I think you did a really good job, um, providing the high-level data that, um, helps us when we get presented with that question of, or when we're evaluating ourselves, decisions of is, is this what the community wants? Um, we each are approached by different demographics. We each had a different voter set, some of them overlap. And then you have that demographic of the community that's not comfortable engaging directly at all. So I think that the survey was a great way to reach out to the community and give them an opportunity to be involved in the local government. Um, there's some really great baseline information. And I love the fact that you highlighted that a lot of our staff is a team of one. And it's really cool to see all of the things that you're able to accomplish based off of tools like the survey and the comprehensive plan. So thank you for taking the time to put this together and provide this presentation this evening.
Yeah, one more thing to say. Uh, I know our local government didn't get real high ratings, but if you compare that with the federal government, we did fantastic.
Knocked it out of the park.
Amen. Wanted to compliment you guys on that.
And, you know, just the, just the last one, you know, on that last page of community engagement, higher than the benchmark. I hope you all noticed that, um, did you vote in your most recent election? Wow. Attended a local public meeting. Those are both higher than national benchmarks. So I think there's a lot to be said about. Um, we really sincerely care about community engagement and we're listening and we want to make things better.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'm not going to say too much that everybody else didn't already say. I just want to give a shout out, obviously, to LCSO. You guys are doing a fabulous job. Um, and, uh, you know, I really appreciated the fact that the board wanted to include the open-ended question piece. Uh, some of those were maybe a little bit tough to swallow, but I think we all kind of understand that that's, that's, that's why we're here, right? And we're trying to get some of this stuff fixed. So, um, I would agree with Trustee Gator. Let's, uh, definitely have a work session on this and see what we can kind of bring up to the top and get some of the low-hanging fruit. Uh, obviously the utility stuff, I think it'll be really interesting to see when we do this again in the next couple of years, once the, uh, wastewater and water plants are online in mid-two thousand twenty-four, it'll be really interesting to see if some of those results kind of change. So, uh, thank you to all the staff for putting this together and making sure that the community's engaged. Really cool stuff. So thanks, guys.
Thank you. It's great. All right, next, uh, we will have a presentation by Mr. Tom Gonzalez, the Laramo County Department of Health and Environment.
Good evening. Thanks for having me. Tom Gonzalez, Public Health Director for Laramo County. I really appreciate you taking the time out of your busy day to, to spend a few moments, minutes with me as we're talking about, uh, our commitment to reshaping the future of public health in Laramo County and how we want to work with you to build a vibrant, resilient, thriving community throughout Laramo County. I have to say right off the bat, I'm impressed. I'm a person that loves data. We live with data. And doing this community assessment is perhaps up to you and the, and the questions you ask and the information you got back was brilliant. It almost looks like we planned this, Kelly, for having me coming right after this. So when I saw this this afternoon, I was looking at your board packet, I said, oh, this is awesome because we're going to talk about social determinants of health. We're going to talk about how we can work together as health strategists. And you've got a ton of the data that, uh, most communities don't have. So right off the bat, kudos to you. Uh, this is our kickoff, uh, to what we're calling a Health Strategist: Shaping the Future of Public Health Tour. Throughout Laramo County, you're the first, so, uh, give me criticism and feedback, how we can do better. But we're going to go to all our eight municipalities, our civic boards, to CSU, the school districts, uh, the chambers, et cetera, to make sure we get the word out and hear how we can collaborate, uh, even better. Next slide. All right, wonderful. Well, real quick, our mission, we keep it real simple. It's working to provide everyone in Laramo County the opportunity for a healthy life. Our key words there is everyone, an opportunity for a healthy life. Uh, you know, while our departments, this is our department's mission statement, I believe health is something that connects all of us. Health is a shared value. You guys saw it in your community assessments. And we want all of our communities to thrive and for our residents to be healthy and for our families to, to prosper. So I think that's a shared value that we all have here in Laramo County. It's what makes Laramo County a great place to live, work and raise your family. Next slide. Just a little overview of the presentation. We're talking a little bit about what's this Public Health three-point-O. What is this? The power of partnerships. What is a health strategist? Uh, how this benefits your community here in Wellington. A little bit of our programming at the Health Department and our public health in action. And I failed to mention back in the mission statement, the one unique aspects of Health Department is we are your health department, we're everyone's health department in Laramo County. Where typical county government stays in the unincorporated areas. You have your own road and bridge. The county has their own road and bridge, but we are your health department. So that makes us pretty unique. And we're, we're governed by a Board of Health, so that's separate and, uh, appointed by the county commissioner. So we want to make sure we're hearing from all of our three hundred and sixty-five residents and visitors because of that unique, uh, setup for the Public Health Department. So let's talk about three-point-O. We'll go to the next slide and really it evolves from Public Health one-point-O to two-point-O to three-point-O, they all build on each other. In the late eighteen hundreds, early nineteen hundreds, the germ theory, we started learning that many people were getting sick from contaminated water, maybe food, and then at that time we learned a lot more about vaccinations and viruses. So your local health departments back in, in that timeframe were primarily working on cleaning water, making sure food was safe and vaccinating. I went on for many years and we reduced disease burden through those processes until Public Health two-point-O, which was mid to late eighties, nineteen eighties, where we started seeing chronic disease. And, and the incidence of those situations on, on the population, as well as emerging issues such as HIV/AIDS and other issues that required more safety net clinics. So Public Health served in that role until some of the modern changes with RFQHCs, our federally qualified healthcare clinics, the Affordable Care Act, some changes there to now coming out of a pandemic into three-point-O, which really is just proactively partnering with all of you. And it moves beyond the traditional public health services and really looks at increasing cross-sector collaborations. And we'll talk more about that. The silver lining with COVID, besides my gray hair, is the partnerships that we have out of that. And the more of the unique partnerships, more, we're very more involved with the coroner's office, law enforcement, uh, with our, our academics, our school districts. And now we want to start working more closely with our elected officials and our civic leaders because we know we can do better, things better together. And we want to use our data. We want to look at convening partners to talk about health challenges, whatever those are, and explore solutions upstream and be what we call a health strategist. So on the next slide, it was going to talk a little bit about what is a health strategist. And really, what we're doing is ensuring that the population health activities are targeting community health needs and building effective working relationship with partners such as a town of Wellington and other sectors that affect what we call the social determinants of health. You know, I, I've been doing this for a little while and it, it, it always amazes me when a, a government comes in and says, we're the health department, we know what you need. We don't know what the We don't know what the town in Wellington needs. I do know a little bit now, just on your community assessment. But it's more important that my staff and Kelly and Patty's staff are working together to understand what the needs are of this community. We do know, and I've been working with you guys on your drinking water and wastewater. And I applaud you on that efforts because that is a big lift and you're right. It is, uh, a challenge for almost all communities, especially littler communities. So, uh, we work with you closely there. We want to continue to work and be your health strategist and look at the data and where we can convene people and partners together to solve problems. So that's what we're talking about with being a health strategist. So we have our familiar issues. We have communicable diseases. We've got West Nile virus. We still have COVID. Uh, we have foodborne illness, less of it today, which is good. We have parent, child and family health challenges. We have clinical services. We have environmental health. We have emergency response and preparedness and we have others. But what we're really wanting to do is look at those solutions for today's challenges and looking at what we call social determinants of health. Income, employment, childcare, uh, mental health, substance use abuse, transportation, education access. Many of what you heard in your community survey. So I applaud you again because you're looking upstream and doing the work right now. And a big one that came out is safety. I don't have that on the list there. But safety and a sense of belonging is totally a determinant of health. And the more we look at qualitative data and talk to our communities, communities that don't feel safe with whatever that may be, people of color, LGBTQIA, et cetera. They typically have more poorer health outcomes. They struggle more and that's where we want to come in, look at the data, bring our partners and try to create an environment where everyone feels safe and everyone has that access. Sometimes, sometimes even my, my whole family will say, well, how is housing, Tom, a public health issue? Well, we look at that as a basic necessity, uh, and the challenges can directly impact, uh, health if you don't have housing. Struggling to pay your rent or knowing that as housing costs rise, which they significantly are, uh, you're not going to be able to maybe afford your rent. What does that impact you and your mental health, uh, and your physical health as well? And that's a cost on our community. Another example is food security and insecurity. Quite, uh, when we look at the data, food insecurity, especially on our young, is fairly significant in Laramo County. To the point where we have children having a difficult time focusing in classrooms and learning in school. What does that do for the long time? That means they miss opportunities, um, and possibly losing on those educational opportunities and long-term income opportunities later in life. So that's what we're talking about, getting more upstream and looking at these challenges and providing solutions to those challenges. So we all can have that opportunity for a healthy life. So where are we going? Again, I was talking about the stronger connection with civic and community leaders. This is a start right here. We want to be in front of you. We want to hear from you as your health department. We want to have proactive solutions. I, I, I have to share this story because it's, it's just, it humbles me, but, uh, last year went to the Berthoud Town Board and was required around West Nile virus and spraying. And I remember the town manager going, oh shoot, Tom's here. That means something's not going well. And it dawned on me, well, that's, that's, we're doing something wrong here. We shouldn't be only be coming to you when something's not going well. We should be coming to you to hear your data and problem solving with you on how we can create more thriving communities where we value that health. So we want to make sure we're out in front and being more proactive. We want to look and better serve our historically underserved communities and families. We know access is, is a challenge in Laramo County, whether that's rural, urban, whether that's, uh, different aspects of transportation. I know that's a challenge here. So we want to make sure we're hearing from everyone and making sure we ju- don't have underserved communities. Bridge bakers is another word and being active partners. So public health 3.0, how does it benefit Wellington? What, what does this really do? And I, you guys have problems. Some of them are very complex. It's not one solution. Um, you're drinking water and wastewater, you're tackling that. Uh, there's other solution, uh, issues, the asphalt plant being relocated, uh, utilizing our staff on the data and the state toxicologists to understand what the risks are. It's all about risk analysis. Uh, we want to make sure we're looking at policies through a health lens. We call it health and all policies. Every policy that you make, we make, there could be unintended consequences. And we want to make sure we understand what those could be through data, through our qualitative and quantitative assessments. So we make sure we're making the most, the best informed decision because you guys make difficult decisions all day long. And including in that, the social determinants of health, again, which you folks are already on top of with your survey. And then minimizing those impacts on, on whatever the health situation would be. Now, we talk about looking at underserved communities. I brought that up a couple of times. We talk about health equity and health equity recognizes that each person has different circumstances and allocates the exact resources and opportunities needed to reach an equal outcome. Now that's very different than equality. Equality means each individual or group of people is given the same resource or opportunity. So we, we're more focusing on equity and how can we provide those resources and opportunities needed to reach all of our, our population? Well, we'll talk about our programs and how those work together and we're implementing them into public health 3.0. Just want to make sure you all have an overview of what your health department provides to your residents. So our first slide is our strategic planning and health equity initiatives. Now that we've defined health equity, we do have a team working at the health department, working with our school districts and our other civic leaders on what that means to look at policies through an equity lens. We also have internal working groups, working on process improvement and also looking at the meeting, our diverse needs of our residents. What makes Laramo County so special, right here in Wellington, a beautiful small town. I was raised in small town and, and the western slope, and it brings me back to my childhood days, which were amazing. And then we have Fort Collins, very, very urban, but still still a small town. And Loveland, up to Estes Park and Red Feathers, it's quite diverse until you can go out to Timothun Berthoud, a beautiful county. But we know that means each community has a, a different need and they have a different culture in many aspects. So, uh, one health department trying to, uh, fit everyone's needs, but it's just one shoe size isn't going to work. We know that. So that's why we're coming to you. Our Office of Planning and Partnerships, that's where all our data resides. And we've got a ton of data these days. And so we've hired some population epidemiologists. They're really smart people that take the data and tell us what it's telling uh, in words that I can, can I can barely understand, but try to make sure I articulate it to you. From that, we produce a community health improvement plan, which we want to make sure everyone's aware of. Our current plan that sun sets the end of this year was mental health, uh, throughout the lifespan and access to affordable childcare. While we've made progress there, we still have a lot of challenges. I work with trustee Mason on the regional opioid abatement council and we're doing some good work there. But we're learning about the challenges and the gaps within that continuum of care. So there's a lot of work that needs to be done there. Uh, in our youth engagement program, we've really proud of our team working with youth throughout the county to hear from them. Uh, especially through the pandemic and what are their challenges now? And we'll be talking a little bit more about that later in the presentation. Our clinical services, if you come to our health department, whether in Fort Collins, Loveland or Estes Park, you'll get low or no cost immunizations for your children and infants and adults. Health information regarding international travel and such as malaria and yellow fever. And we have sexual reproductive health preventive services as well. Our parent, child and family health program, you know, I always start there that data is so profound when we have children that start off on the wrong foot. Long, uh, life issues. And so these, this program really partners up first time parents with, uh, with a nurse, a nurse family partnership program for eligible moms and dads, uh, anywhere along their pregnancy up to two years. Really working on those life skills, making sure the nutritional needs of the child are met, uh, the safety needs, et cetera. So that program is a very successful program. And also our WIC program, it's the sup- uh, special supplement nutrition program for women, infants and children. Almost $10 million a year comes to our community through our WIC vouchers to feed our, our children. Our HCP program for families with children who have special healthcare needs. That's a great program that gives access to parents that have children with special needs and make sure they have the right resources. Environmental health, which I saw a lot in your community assessment, environmental planning. Please utilize us there. You guys do a lot of big decisions on land use. Most recently, the asphalt plant, air quality and improvement initiatives. We shout, we're struggling there being in the non-attainment ozone area. So we want to continue to work on initiatives to improve our air quality. Septic systems in more of the rural areas to make sure we're protecting our precious resource, our groundwater. Water quality such as drinking water and wastewater, we want to make sure we're partnering with you on those projects. Burn permits, our childcare safety programs, food safety and, and I heard a swimming pool. We're, we're involved in making sure swimming pools are safe, which are great, great, uh, rec- resource for our children. Communicable disease, we all know a lot about that recently, but, uh, there's over 100 reportable diseases that our team, uh, when they get reported, they detect, investigate. And if there's clusters, try to minimize an outbreak, such as a foodborne illness or West Nile virus, those things. Uh, providing lots of information regarding where are the risks. Uh, currently, right now it is West Nile virus with the high amount of Culex mosquitoes and, and the West Nile virus found in the birds. So birds to mosquitoes, humans. So that's something we're dealing with right now. And then of course, as you all know, coordination of an epidemic and pandemic response. Let's hope we don't have one of those in the next many, many years. And then another group working on emergency preparedness and response, working with your teams quite a bit, making sure we're prepared for the next natural, whether that's manmade or a mother nature disaster. We are, we have our many disasters here in Laramo County, as well as the next outbreak or pandemic, heaven forbid. We got a team working, uh, with your team on that as well. Those are just some of the programs we provide. And then I'd like to just talk a little bit about public health in action, just some examples of where we are partnering with towns like you and the boards to really move public health along and, and ultimately, uh, improve health. Our first one is our safe sleep campaign. Now this is completely data driven. This comes out of a, uh, a committee that's set through the general assembly called our, uh, our child fatality review committee. So that's made up of law enforcement, the coroner, our hospitals, EMS and our epidemiologists. And they review the data on, it's a tough, tough group to, uh, it's a tough team to be on because they're reviewing data of preventable deaths of our children. And outside of birth defects and preterm birth, sudden unexpected infant death is the leading cause of infant mortality in Laramo County, Colorado and the United States. And is a, is one of the leading causes of preventable death among Colorado ones under 18. So last year, Corey Wilford, our Office of Communications Manager and the teams put together an infant sleep, uh, promotion, uh, where we have s- uh, sleep sacks, safe sleep bags for kiddos, uh, at birthing centers. Lots of education around co-sleeping and the risks there and information around putting fluffies in the crib that could create that environment where you get that unexpected infant deaths, uh, death issue. So that's just one that was born out of data and through a health strategist approach. Our next, we're real excited about is our health, wellbeing and resilience data dashboard. If you haven't seen it, the, uh, the address is on there where you're seeing the script being put. But we can certainly get that to you. There's a wealth of data on this dashboard. And it's all around the social determinants of health and where we're doing in Laramo County compared to Colorado and it's in some cases, the United States. Uh, this was a great partnership through the board of health and the board of county commissioners. Thanks to the board of county commissioners for funding it. Uh, but it gives information like 40% of Laramo County residents worry about affording medical care, just basic access. That's right around the state average. I'd like to see that a lot lower. Lot more information around mental health, our suicide rate, which has decreased slightly, which is, is positive. Our childcare access, which is extremely difficult still, our food security, housing, transportation and employment and the other social environments. So those are all on that dashboard that you certainly have access to when you're making, um, critical decisions. And we just wrapped up our community health assessment. This is a requirement in statute every five years. The local public health agencies conducted community health assessment, very similar to your, your community assessment you did. And we built it around the nine, uh, social determinants of health. You can see three of them on the board and income and employment, mental health and housing, housing instability, which are three difficult ones in Laramo where we're struggling. I just based upon, I think I overheard here, the inflation and the cost of living is making it very difficult and stressful on our residents, which then lead to unfortunately poor health outcomes. So we just wrapped up that assessment. It's online and that's going to drive our 2024 community health improvement plan. We certainly want to make sure Kelly, her staff and you all have an opportunity to comment and provide feedback into the community plan. Oh, I do is going to give this year versus our previous, uh, one, uh, community health assessment. We did a lot more qualitative where we met with 13 different groups throughout the county. One was in the Wellington area and listened to people. And we heard, you know, information around like mental health access several times. There is a wait for a counselor no matter where I go. So access is a big key thing we're hearing from our community members. When they're trying to seek it, it's hard to find. So that's something we're going to have to work together and try to solve that problem. Our next one is a real neat success story. It's a pilot project, but it really talks about the, the, the power and the leverage of collaboration. I was appointed in the end of 2018 and as I walked in the door, one of the feedback I heard is our youth really want a third space or a youth center where it's substance free, where they can get access to writing resumes, mental health counselors, you know, crafts, arts and just being a kid. And I thought to myself, how are we going to do this? And, uh, uh, here we are about four years later, a collaboration with the, uh, Center for Outreach, uh, uh, city of Fort Collins, Laramo County, the health department and Pooter School District. We were able to get a pilot off the ground, one youth center, and we want to get many of these. It's only one, but I don't know if we can show the video, but there's a video behind that that shows just a couple minute video on how this all came about. You never know with the technology. Sometimes it works.
Put your mic down to it.
I could.
But then here it will watch.
Oh, well.
Could you send us a link?
We'll do that. Absolutely.
If you actually click on the slideshow in the packet, if you just click on the picture, it'll take you to that video. So it's, it's built into the packet and on our website.
Thank you, trust. Yes, it's a good three, four minute watch. And then lastly, you know, how can we work together most effectively? And I, I, I'm hearing just with, from your community assessment, you value clear communication and shared vision and goals and early engagement, collaboration spirit and innovative approaches. And that's, that's really what we want to do. We want to offer that with, with all of you. And then lastly, uh, we're excited to partner with the town of Wellington. We are excited to hear what your, your health challenges are, um, what, where are the data and delivery gaps? And how can we work together to solve those problems and, and be your health strategists? With that, that's my presentation. I'm sure hoping any questions or comments and feedback. Start with trustee Daly? You got any questions? Perfect.
First thing is I, I definitely value your, your organization and everything that you're doing. So thank you so very much. Um, a couple of things that you said today made me feel a little bit more passionate about it. And specifically you mentioning a couple of things. And specifically you mentioning a couple of things um that I think are sometimes missing or. Uh not considered enough are are those items that you brought up of sense of belonging related to diversity or sense of belonging in general, regardless of the reason. Um safety, housing and food insecurity. And then the need and um to engage more mental behavioral health and substance abuse support. Um because I know health means a lot of things, but those are the pieces I think that have a big um. Impact that aren't always directly correlated to, you know, health, health, physical health, those type of things. So. Thank you very much for acknowledging that. Um that and the focus on equity and and really serving the most vulnerable. Um I think that is uh spot on and I very much appreciate that focus that you shared with us. Um the first question I have is until recently, until I was involved with a friend who was running for a health district. Uh board position. I didn't know much about the health district that you mentioned. Um what other major circles or organizations are we not engaged with that we should be? Um obviously you, the health district is a great resource. Is there any other major thing in Laramo County or in that area that we're missing out on if we're not plugged in with?
That's a great question. I I would say. One resource where you finding is a wonderful asset is Colorado State University. They have a lot to offer. Especially with engagement, community engagement processes. Much there as well. United Way is another one we're working more closely with. Uh uh. The chambers, I'm sure you're working with them, but those are ones and and definitely the Pooter School District is uh. Been a big advocate for equity and safe spaces and we're I'm having two kids in Pooter. I'm very pleased on the. Where they're going. So I think those are some big ones, at least locally. I think statewide, absolutely, we need to con- continue those state partnerships and making sure we're being represented down in Denver as well. Sometimes our voice gets lost and so we need to make sure we're we're sharing it.
Awesome. Okay, I I appreciate those very much. Uh we worked with C S U Extension Office at the state of the youth, talking about a lot of resources and potential that they could have with helping with a lot of those initiatives. That was fantastic. The other thing that Wellington's working on or potentially, of course, with PSD is the Student Health Center.
Yes.
Yeah, um here, more accessible to our community. Um that's something that's underway, being considered. Um it's something that just so you know, on our radar, uh is definitely a huge resource that could be available to our community. Any thoughts on?
Oh, yes, we're a big advocates for school-based health car clinics. Uh and I know there's still the need to get mental health provided in the clinic. So we're. We're working with Pooter on ways to find funding to re- resources, but. Data shows that those are much effective on especially more vulnerable populations and access. So yes. I'm very excited. Wellington has a school-based healthcare clinic and I missed, I forgot to bring that up. I know they're going to have more of that of physical health, but definitely want to see that we get mental health um resources in there as well.
Great. I see everybody running around doing health physicals and doing everything ready for school. And I'm just thinking of looking forward of this might be different next year. So.
I'm with you.
Yeah.
For bringing that up. That is a really good resource for Wellington. That's exciting.
Great. Uh thank you. And I'm I'm super excited too. So to hear you say that about it makes me feel much better. Um some of the feedback I have, um I always I always bring this and I hate it because it makes me sound negative, but. Uh it's really because I think these services are so amazing. But you talked about access concerns in general. People have access concerns, whether it's a wait time or providers, whatever the case is. I do want to just state that Wellington is more disadvantaged than that because not only do we not have those providers available here physically. Um the access or times for appointments or anything like that also is the case, but there is no public transportation to get us to where there are. So as an entire population, and you mentioned transportation is one of those items that you're adding to your list of of concerns that need to. Uh incorporate into health. Um Wellington is. We're all of the above and and completely isolated when it comes to transportation. If there's no public transportation for those in need of that, of those vulnerable. Vulnerable communities. Um and then already below the issue of access concerns to begin with. So I always want to bring that up um in specific to the youth center that you mentioned. What an amazing initiative, so needed, so amazing. I'm guessing it's not in Wellington, right? But that would make sense, right? But what I do want to say is there is an amazing organization that already serves. The most of Laramo County youth of any childcare provider, and it's the Boys and Girls Club. And they have amazing footprint. They already have amazing logistics services. But with more funding, I bet they could do what you're talking about with that support and they are here and they are everywhere. So I just, I want to plant that seed. I know you've already considered it, but if we got a vote, we have an amazing Boys and Girls Club, amazing facility and um we could always do more there.
Yeah, I really appreciate that. The transportation I found when I was reading the community assessment was astounding. I think. Ninety seven percent said we don't have transportation or public transportation. That to me, it was like an eye opener. So that. I appreciate that. That is a a unique uh issue here. And you're right, the Boys and Girls Club I did tour. It's been a few years ago, but they have wonderful uh footprint resources over there and there's. There's got to be ways we can do better collaboration, provide access because you're right, we could do better. And that's a one of our initiative for three point O is how can we be better when it comes to access?
Yeah.
It it even though Fort Collins seems like a hop, skip away, it it is, it is much further than that if you don't have transportation. Or you can't, you have to work. So it's not eight to five. So. Then all of a sudden you're stuck with, how do I get that service? So I I hear you and I appreciate it.
Great. And then the other piece that um just is near and dear to my heart is just recreation in general and the value to to health. So. Wellington also is looking for any opportunity for support or ideas and how we can. Seek more recreation opportunities, trails, open spaces, anything like that. So if ever. You have a great idea, send it our way. We would love to accept that.
I appreciate that. I'm sorry to interrupt. Uh our our chip twenty twenty four, one of our priority statements is just that. Because that's what came out loud and clear and much of the community was recreation spaces or spaces just to. You know, do those things. So we are going to make that a priority throughout the county. So love to sit down, have more conversations with with the staff and team on that.
Wonderful. Thank you so much for being here.
You're welcome. Trustee Mason?
Yeah, uh Mr. Gonzalez, really appreciate the presentation and um I think what you said a lot about, uh you know, the the. Cross local government partnerships and these types of things are very important and certainly uh really appreciate. The county and our municipal governments partnerships as far as the opioid abatement council goes. Uh that's been very cool stuff and to be able to make some decisions there and and get that funding out there for these folks that have. Unfortunately gotten into some of these things. I think it's very cool for us to be able to work together and get that going. Um one thing, uh just add what Trustee Daly said. Uh I would highly encourage the county to look at transportation options, certainly to. Uh the Behavioral Health Center coming online. I think it was Lori Stolen who was out here uh just a couple of weeks ago talking about Longview Center. Um I I I don't know if that's, you know, the vouchers for Ubers or you guys having some type of bus. Uh that you can pick folks up on, but I would highly encourage the county to look at those types of things. Um especially being up here in Wellington where we just, we don't have the access. I think that's all I've got for the moment.
I appreciate that. And that was one I was interviewed by, I think the Colorado one, it was. Yeah, access for Wellington and Red Feathers is going to be really difficult for the Behavioral Health Center. And that's something we're going to have to do better. I'd like to tell you all, working with Trustee Mason, he's been awesome on the Regional Opioid Abatement Council. Access for you, sometimes the meetings are in Loveland, but he's always there, whether he's on Zoom or in person. He's been a wonderful. Uh voting member. So we appreciate you and your involvement. Thanks. Robert, Tim?
Thank you. Thank you for the presentation. It was a lot of uh really great information. Uh we talked a lot about providing uh health services and enhancing uh quality of life for our youth, but I was wondering if you could speak to a little bit about. Beyond transportation. Um it's very common in neighborhoods that they'll go through um cycles where it's a very young family. They age in place, the kids go away and then. Uh people like to age in place. So at some point, you know, if we are being proactive in our planning, what can Wellington do to. Prepare or enhance our ability for people to be able to age in place comfortably here?
Thank you for that. That's a an excellent question. That's been coming up quite a bit. I don't really have the answers and we want to look at that more because I think we're missing that population and that's an important population that. Uh we need to make sure they're part of the plan. Uh and as we all are aging and myself as how do we do that and still create that accessibility? And the and the health equity. So that is one that. We're with conversations have come up. We need to do a better job on it. I'd love to dabble in that more, hear your thoughts and see what we can do to promote that more.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
I look forward to seeing what you guys bring to the table on that as well.
Speaking?
Appreciate what you're doing, aging in place. I can kind of relate to that, but. Transportation and I know with the new behavioral health center that we got down there, it's. It's all brand new and uh I know when I was talking to Lori about that, you know, everything, it's going to be a learning process. So the rides, the access, all that. We're a lot better than what we were. And I think it's not going to do anything but get a lot better too. So I think you guys are going in the right direction. And it's great that you're out here working with us and uh trying to see what our community needs too. So I appreciate that.
Thank you. You're welcome. Trustee Teas.
Yes, thank you very much for your presentation. I would like to ask, point out, verify. Do you guys have a health department bus that travels that travels around and does like immunizations, vaccinations, shingles? Checkups, stuff like that? Do you actually have like a health bus?
Great question. We do not.
Okay.
Staff would love one. The state health department does and you'll see it sometimes over off the old uh. Albertson's parking lot, close to our Fort Collins offices. We do not have a traveling clinic. That boy, that'd be something I'd love to budget for a van or something that could provide those resources here and other rural access areas, but someday hopefully.
Well, and it's set it pretty much a standard for not only our community, red feather. Hard to access communities, but also communities that are even in Weld County that would have that difficult access moving further east. Um just something to consider moving forward and even in emergency response, that would be extremely assistive in those issues. Um so that scratches out my ask if we could have a bus visit our town. So next bullet point. Um so I will say the one thing I appreciate, the senior discussion, I appreciate the. Inclusivity, including discussion, one discussion that has been an ongoing thing. Um near and dear, I wouldn't say to me, but our community as a whole is ADA accessibility for. Any kind of services. So and I'm talking more than just the healthcare side of things because as you guys are a whole health unity. You're looking at work programs here for peoples with disabilities. There's not options. When you look at people that work with ARC and Laramo County to do like home visits and. Um pickups for work study programs. Y'all have none in this area. Um so and I just speak from experience and knowing that when you're successfully trying to keep someone in your home who does suffer from a disability. And attempt to do anything for them, you will hit five hundred walls before you actually accomplish one thing and then you backslide because you found out funding got pulled. So I would say that that's one thing that continually I don't see. It's great that some funding is there. But there's not a lot of services for people with disabilities out here in this area. Um that would be one of my biggest asks as you move forward is. Looking at retaining and recruiting people from Wellington. There are people that are amazing paras. That would do side jobs as far as helping with transportation, helping with the peer buddy system. There is alternatives. Let's bring jobs to our area, allow people in our area to apply for those positions and be specifically assigned. To those positions here locally. So that would be an amazing option because when you're competing, you'll pay more. Just to try and get someone to come out and help you in this area. So you pull money out of your own pocket just to get those additional services. Which could be invested in something else here in our community, but it's not. So I would ask that that be something that is on your guys' radar. Also additional recreation costs as a whole health. Thing and visiting many parks and public spaces that I do. The parks passes and items that get charged for people to go out and mentally feel better out in nature. It's a lot of money. I mean, to access horse tooth, I pay two hundred and eighty dollars a month for a truck for a parks pass. So at the end of the day, and then if you want to add in my boat, it's more. So but you set up all of these recreational spaces and we have so many to access in our area. But you make it unaffordable to anybody who doesn't make above a certain income bracket. So if there was a way to offer. An easier way to financially afford access to our open spaces, because you do have to pay, you have to pay to park up at Horse Tooth. Like you pull into a parking lot up there and you're paying just to park your car alongside the road. So at the end of the day, having those kind of things is. One of those issues. We, I know we've had the discussion a lot about Smith Lake lately. I've seen it pop up. It's a recreation facility that is Laramo County, open space, open to the public. That people can actually access kayak, paddleboard, do whatever they want on it. We don't market it a lot here in Wellington for any of our people to use. But looking at something that adding that to your your health radar on getting out and doing those kind of activities and where. People can actually access them. So and maybe make it specific for the community, work with. Our people here in town to figure out how to pinpoint those areas and get it out to people. I know if people want to access Smith, they still have to have their little stamp. So it's literally like a a fishing license. If you want to even go kayak on that water. You still have to have a fishing license to be able to just access main public parks. So which is not a downfall, but at the same time, have you bought a fishing license lately? They're expensive too.
Yeah.
So and you know, so I guess that, sorry, that's a long explanation of. You want people to get out, be healthy, do these things, but you're making it unaffordable to people that don't have expendable incomes. So that would be one, the other one of my. And I'm sad to hear that SIDS is still one of the highest things that we are dealing with. Um I went through your training as a new parent at Laramo County Health Department twenty three years ago with my son. So and learning how to keep him safe. It's sad to hear that that is still the number one item that is. Being addressed when it is so easily preventable. So I thank you for the work that you all do and I'm grateful. Thank you for. Mister Trustee Mason for working with the opioid abatement council. I think it's one of those things. Health is important, but it also has to be affordable too.
I appreciate that. It comes back to the health equity piece and you make good points. And I do appreciate your ADA and people living with disabilities. That rose to the surface in our community health. Assessment and that will be one of our priority statements. So. Uh there is a lot of issues there and the more we unpeeled that onion, the more I was. Astounded, I actually appalled in some ways and and then when you're talking about, the data says about twenty to twenty four percent. People in Laramo County are living with some form of disability. What we have got to do better. So I thank you for bringing that up and that's going to be something we're working on the next five years. Love to hear all of your thoughts on how we can do that better. So thank you. Trustee Gator?
So appreciate you coming out, uh Tom. And so I it's good to see kind of the direction that you guys are going, especially like the partnership versus top down. Um I think what's important, especially as you're going and having these conversations, it's fantastic to have it on a slideshow. It's fantastic to say it in a presentation. It's a whole nother thing to implement that.
Sure.
And so I think that that was one of the biggest things now. My interactions with the health department started in the middle of the pandemic, not a good time to start interactions with the health department. So it was definitely not really the collaboration. So. I'm really glad to see that's where you guys are heading towards is how can we work together? And I think that's one of the big things that I feel is important for Wellington is understand that Wellington is not Fort Collins. Wellington is not Loveland. We are our. Own area. We have our own issues. We have our own concerns. And so I think it would be really great to see the health department working with us to say, what are the issues and things that are important to your community? And what are the solutions, right? Because the solution that works in Fort Collins may not be the solution that is the right one for Wellington. And so I think that it's really important and I'm excited to hear it. I just would love to see us actually be able to execute on that and truly work together on building something that's built for our community. Um the second thing I did want to highlight, um just as great as you guys are looking at things, and I know that's one of the hard things this government, there's a million problems to solve. Um is I would just. Is I would just caution you, be careful about spreading yourselves too far and wide. Because when you start to take on additional things, again, you, we have limited resources. There's a limited tax base that we're able to access. You eventually something has to start falling off to pick up new things. So just. Make sure as you guys are going through your process, just be thinking about, okay, if we're taking this on, what is this going to take away from? Um, I think it's something, it's very easy to, like, this is super important. We have to take care of this, but then it's not realizing, oh, by taking this on, we're. Letting something else to fall off and it could be that something else that fell off was really important. So just. As you're bringing on new things, that's great. Just make sure we're not letting old stuff fall off the cart as we're going through it. So, and then the other thing too, just to keep in mind is we're implementing new programs and things, especially as we're talking about affordability, like there are a lot of things that go into that absolutely. Costs of water, costs of, you know, materials building, but another thing that gets factored into that is property taxes. And I know a lot of our residents are seeing probably anywhere from a hundred to $300 increase a month. In their property taxes with the new assessments that came in and a lot of that has to do. With as governments growing, things have to be funded and that's not just the county, that's local government, that's the state government, it's how the special districts. But I think that's something to keep in mind as well as we're implementing new programs and especially as we see concerns about affordability. Okay, what are we doing at our end as government to try and make sure that, okay? Can we try to work this into an existing budget or can we try to make sure that we're not increasing the burden on residents? Because again, especially as one of your priorities is affordability and living. We want to make sure that as we're building a program to help with affordability, that program isn't actually causing the problem to get worse, if that makes sense.
Yeah, it makes a ton of sense. I appreciate that. I think that's where that partnership and the checks and balances are really are beneficial. Because you're right, we can get excited and we can, you know, get our blinders on. And we need to make sure that it's a holistic conversation that what is that cost? And we were just having a conversation today and it's like. Oh, we'd love to do that, but we're going to have to be creative and innovative and there are ways. If we. Put our heads together, we usually can figure it out. So I do appreciate that and thank you.
I think everybody covered. Anything I needed to say. So I just appreciate you for coming out. Um, I do want to just say. Yeah, when you're moving forward, just make sure that what you presented, we can put it into action. It'd be awesome for our community.
Perfect. Thank you.
Thank you. Have a great evening.
All right, on to the consent agenda. So it will consist of July 11th, 2023 Board of Trustees regular meeting, July 18th, 2023 Board Trustees regular meeting or special meeting. And July 25th, 2023 Board Trustees regular meeting. Make a motion on the consent agenda. Move to approve the consent agenda.
A second.
Perfect. Make a roll call, please.
Trustee Gator.
Yes.
Trustee Teats.
Yes.
Trustee Mason.
Yes.
Trustee Wigan.
Yes.
Trustee Daly.
Yes.
Mayor Pretton McDonald.
Yes.
Mayor Shosse.
Yes.
Uh, the motion passes unanimously and the consent agenda is approved.
Thank you. All right, we will now close the regular meeting and Oprah Liquor License Authority Board, time being 7:43. Mr. Clerk, make a roll call, please. Yeah, sure. Take your time.
Thank you. Trustee Daly.
President.
Trustee Gator.
Here.
Trustee Teats.
Here.
Trustee Mason.
Here.
Trustee Wigan.
Here.
Mayor Pretton McDonald.
Here.
Mayor Shosse.
Yes, here.
Thank you. All right, good evening, Mr. Mayor, trustees. It's my, Ethan Moose, the town clerk. My pleasure to be presenting these items to you this evening. First item is. A lodging and entertainment renewal license from KLC two LLC doing business as Wellington Manor. A review of the application found that the establishment is in good standing with the Colorado Secretary of State. The establishment is current with sales tax and the Laramie County Sheriff's Office reported no issues direct, uh, directly related to the establishment's liquor license. The establishment has possession of the premises through a lease agreement and there were no issues or concerns during the visual inspection of the premise. I'm happy to answer any questions that you may have on this renewal.
Any questions? Trustee Gator.
Everything looks good. I see people over there all the time. Um, one thing I think this got added to the report Sergeant Cherry, I think the not applicable line was added. I don't know if that was always there. That's really good because I know before there were sometimes blanks and then like in the note it was written not applicable. So thank you for adding that. So we know that those are not applicable, but everything looks good.
And no? Perfect. Um. Any comments from the public on this agenda item? No. You get a motion to approve.
I move that we approve the KLC two LLC DBA Wellington Manor Lodging and Entertainment Liquor License Renewal.
One second.
Make it a roll call, please.
Trustee Daly.
Yes.
Mayor Pretton McDonald.
Yes.
Trustee Gator.
Yes.
Trustee Teats.
Yes.
Trustee Mason.
Yes.
Trustee Wigan.
Yes.
Mayor Shosse.
Yes.
Thank you. The motion passes unanimously and the license renewal is approved. The next license, uh, excuse me, the next item for the liquor license authority board this evening is a license renewal for a hotel and restaurant city license. By El Mescal Inc. Doing business as Solda Jalisco Mexican Restaurant. A review of the application found the establishment is in good standing with the Colorado Secretary of State. The establishment is current with sales tax and the Laramie County Sheriff's Office reported no issues directly related to the establishment. The establishment's liquor license. They have possession of the premise through a lease agreement and there were no issues or concerns during a visual inspection of the premise. Happy to answer any questions you may have for me on this renewal.
Questions? No. Perfect. Comments from public? Perfect. Make a motion to approve.
I'll make a motion to approve the hotel and restaurant liquor license and takeout permit renewal application for Esme, El Mescal Incorporated doing business as Solda Jalisco Mexican Restaurant.
Second.
Make a roll call, please.
Trustee Mason.
Yes.
Mayor Pretton McDonald.
Yes.
Trustee Wigan.
Yes.
Trustee Teats.
Yes.
Trustee Daly.
Yes.
Trustee Gator.
Yes.
Mayor Shosse.
Yes.
Thank you. The motion passes and the renewal is approved.
Perfect. Uh, we will now close the liquor licensing authority meeting, time being 7:48. Uh, do. Other reports from town office, Mr. Deputy Administrator.
I would like to turn it over to Ethan, who has a report about the board and commission vacancies. Thank you.
All right. Doing a lot of up and down this evening. Um, I just wanted to very quickly cover some advisory board appointment vacancies and the process that we'll be going through as a town. Staff Patty's asked me to, uh, take the lead on this. As you may know, we have two finance committee vacancies, um, which were. Which we intend to search for, uh, appointments as well as an expiring term for the housing authority. At the end of this year, we'll be going through the process of conducting interviews. The plan currently is. For applicants to apply via our website. We have the application form available. You can find it on the, let me just pull that up real fast. You can find it on the boards and commissions page on the website. Uh, that is specifically under the boards and commissions. Uh, town and our, our town on the website. We'll be accepting applications up until noon on August 24th for the first round of interviews. And then the intent is to work with you to schedule the first round of interviews that last week of, of August, uh, into the first week of September. Depending on how applications go and, um, how, how many interviews we need to conduct, I'll be working with you to. Directly schedule those. Again, Patty's asked me to sort of look at this process and. Come to you with recommendations about how we could potentially standardize or improve. Uh, so that's something that you can expect from my. My department, uh, toward the end of this year. Happy to answer any questions you all may have about that topic for now.
The only thing I ask is that we make sure that we're reaching out to any members whose terms are getting ready, who they might have to reapply. That they are getting that email notice that they do need to reapply.
Certainly.
Thank you.
Anybody else? Perfect. Thank you. Staff communication included in the packet. Are there any questions on these items from the board?
Trustee Gator. The only question I had, and I don't know that this is in the packet, was for July, how we kind of did on 4th of July in enforcement. I don't know if you're going to do that at a later time, Sergeant Cherry. Perfect. That's it.
Awesome. All right, are the board reports start with, okay, trusty dude.
Uh, this leak, this weekend, uh, Mayor Pretton and I were guests of the commissioners, uh, Jody Shattuck McNally. Kristen Stevens and John Cofalis, he invited, they invited us out to the Laramie County Fair. Where we got to hang out with, uh. Congressman Joe Noguz and a plethora of electeds and staff from all across Laramie County. It was amazing experience and a really good celebration of fair. Uh, and a lot of people in Wellington know what fair is. Obviously there's tons of 4H families here among many other things. But it was a really good opportunity to talk to everybody in a, you know. A very relaxed setting of fair and we all got drenched in the rain. It was maybe the most fun I've had all summer. We brought kids, they did carnival stuff. We looked at all kinds of 4H projects. Um, Wellington was everywhere. 4H club, you know. Everything here from Wellington, everything here from Wellington. I, I've been in two different 4H clubs as a child in the Wellington or Waverly area. They're still there and going strong, um, as well as tons of other, uh, clubs that I'm not super familiar with, but. I ran into people I know and my kids go to school with and it was amazing. For those of you who don't know, 4H, they'll have an entire year project and county fairs come, is the final. It is. The celebration of everything that they have done all year. It is so much work for all these amazing projects that. That the youth have participated in and all the support that they receive throughout our community and across the county. So if you haven't had the opportunity to celebrate or congratulate any 4H families, please do so. They have committed their. Probably their entire summer to these projects. Um, and they did amazingly well. My favorite childhood memories are from there and state fair. So I love those. Um, but tomorrow's auction, so good luck to those and hopefully. They can fund their projects for next year.
It's been online too.
Yeah, really.
Yeah.
We should look into that more, but, um, it's really exciting and it was a great opportunity. I had tons of fun. Um. Tomorrow night is Parks and Rec meeting here at 6:00 PM. Please come. Uh, we have a lot of cool things upcoming, including, um, some veterans memorial potential projects that are. Coming in the near future that we'd love to get community feedback on or anything related to parks, trails, um, open space or recreation. So. That is the time and place to come. Um, if you would like to tell us how you feel or want to participate more. Thursday is Main Street Market and Centennial Park. Please come, um, especially if the weather's good. There's only been so many that haven't rained out. So if you can, please go. And then this is maybe my most important update. Next week, school starts. And I don't know why every year this has to be said, uh, and it's going to be said everywhere and you'll hear it many times, but. That means kids will be going to school. When school starts, uh, they will be walking, they will be riding their bikes and they will be riding buses and people do not stop. For buses for some reason. The stop sign goes up. It is very scary and there's been a lot of really near misses in around our area, specifically along highway one and in neighborhoods. It's ridiculous. So. Tomorrow, school or not tomorrow, next week, school starts. Some kids will start on Monday. Most of them will start on Thursday. There will be kids everywhere. Please don't hurt our children. Everybody, please watch out. And the people who generally almost hit people are other parents also taking their kids to school. So. Please beware. It's stressful and crazy, but. Let's keep everybody safe. Thank you.
Thank you. Trustee Gator.
So wanted to thank everyone who came out for National Night Out. Thank you, Sergeant Cherry. It was a great turnout. We had the SWAT truck and the robot. My kids were so ecstatic to see them like doing the bomb robot and they got. The pilot, the highlight was when they got to watch them take it up the ramp back into the truck, but it was great to have everyone out there. And what was even more exciting is we had another neighborhood put on their own. So we kind of did the town one and then we had another native hood that went and worked with Sergeant Cherry. Viewpoint, right? And they had a huge turnout over there. So I was excited. I just tell people we got a hundred percent growth in one year and I hope we can do that again. So. The whole point of National Night Out is not that, oh, everyone comes to one spot. It, it, the whole point is that. We want Sergeant Cherry to have to go to like every neighborhood in town. He'd be like, I have to leave. I'm sorry. So. Um, want to encourage people that put one together in your neighborhood. LCSO has been fantastic. They had the dog out. They had the crime scene truck out. You could. See fingerprinting. They had so much stuff out there and they love to be able to do this. And it was exciting too, because I know there was a group of kids at the park. Um, I was bringing ribs over for the law enforcement. They were like, well, can we have some ribs? I was like, sure. So I made, they all came over and got to talk to the law enforcement. So it was a great way to get our kids to, hey. Engage in a positive way. And that's the whole point of it, engaging in a positive way with law enforcement, then hopefully that leads to better interactions in the future. So. Just wanted to highlight LCSO. Thank you very much, Sergeant Cherry on that. Um, and encourage people to go through and get that together. And that's all I got.
Trustee Teats.
I would like to apologize for missing on Sunday for the invitation. I cannot drag Drake out into thunder nor lightning. So we. Bypassed the possible chance of having her stuck out at the fair. Um, but I'm glad to hear that it was a blast and it was a lot of fun. Um. Thank you, Trustee Gator, for making some amazing ribs for the National Night Out. I think that the kids that were hanging out at the park fed their bellies for, for a good 45 minutes. We kept seeing them come back and forth. All of the teens that hang out at the picnic area. So they were bouncing back and forth. They slowly started engaging towards the end too, where they actually started having conversation. So, um, other than that, um. I have been able to spend my summer attending bingo at the T-bar on Thursday nights. It's at 6:30 and it is so much fun. So I would like to invite any of my fellow trustees or any of the community to come out. The first game, your first board is free. And if you want to buy more boards, you can, but so it's a free night of gambling and you have a chance of winning money or prizes.
Who, who, who announces it? Who does the?
Christine Evans with Ace Entertainment. So she keeps you on your toes most of the evening anyways. So if you don't have fun playing bingo, you will laugh at her jokes for the evening, but it's. It's been a blast that we've had that come back to T-bar. I know it used to be there before pre, pre pandemic. And it was good to see it actually come back and it's fun and they have karaoke nights as well. And I'm not attending the karaoke nights. But I wish good luck to anyone who does. Um, they broadcast that. I'm not attending the broadcast of karaoke night. But other than that, no, I don't have anything else.
Cool. Trust Wigan.
I have no reports, but next year I will plan a vacation better so I can attend these different things. I really did miss that Nash, uh, the National Night Out. It was a great time last year that we had, so, uh. Appreciate what everybody does for that. Thank you.
Trustee Daly, you stole my thunder on both things I was going to talk about. So just ditto. But I do have a very curious question, Mr. Mayor. Is that your secret superpower? Are you a bingo caller?
No. No, I was just wondering, I was just wondering if it was, if it was Melinda. That's, that's all.
I was just curious. That's it. That's all I've got.
Yeah. I, I mean, I could, I could do bingo. I mean, I'd probably be pretty good at it, like announcing. I don't have any board reports.
I had a quick, I had a question for Mr. Sapiens. I don't know if Ethan knows. We know when we're going to get our packet for the appeal. Is that coming shortly?
His intent is to have it published tomorrow.
Okay, great. Thank you.
So I, I will be publishing it, but there are a few more things that need to get done.
Great. Thank you.
Okay. Seeing no further business. Uh, make it a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Don't we have a?
It's in the board packet. Not unless we had questions.
Did you have questions about it? Do we need to?
Did we miss? We can, we can rewind. Oh, okay.
It's your turn. Second.
I second it. Perfect. Mr. Clerk, make a roll call, please.
Trustee Gator.
Yes.
Trustee Wigan. Trustee Mason.
Yes.
Trustee Teats.
Yes.
Trustee Daly.
Yes.
Mayor Pretton McDonald. Mayor Shosse.
Yes.
The motion passes unanimously and the meeting is adjourned.
All right, I now adjourn the August 8th, 2023 regular meeting, time being eight o'clock.